Okay. Ready?
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, good morning. How are you, Ron?
Well, other than having 103 temperature and a bad cold, I'm great.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's terrible.
Yeah. Getting a little better today, though. But it's a good thing I didn't plan to be there.
Good morning, Kathy.
Morning, Jack. How are you?
Terrific.
Okay. Great. We're live? We're live. So, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I'd like to please call this meeting to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meeting of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the State Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Department of Education, Secretary of State's office, and notice has been given to the State House Press Corps, the Governor's Office, and the State Board Agenda subscribers. And as a quorum is present, this meeting will now come to order. May I please have a motion?
Don't move.
Thank you, Jack Fornaro. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Board Member Bobrov. Appreciate it. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. And now, I'd like to take this meeting to executive session, whereas in order to protect the personal privacy and to avoid situations wherein the public interest might be deserved, the Open Public Meetings Act permits public bodies to exclude the public from that portion of a meeting at which certain matters are discussed. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that consistent with the provision of NJSA 10:4-12B, the State Board of Education will now adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. May I please have a motion?
Don't move.
Thank you. I believe that was from Elaine Bobrov. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fornaro. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. This meeting will come back at 10 o'clock to be with the rest of the items on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to please begin with, well, first let me reconvene. Whereas consistent with the provision of NJSA, State Board will now adjourn from executive session to resume the open session of this meeting. May I please have a motion, Arcilia?
Move.
Thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I believe Mary Beth Berry was first. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, motion, we will begin. I'd like to please ask Sylvia to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back, everyone. I'd like to wish everyone this month happy holidays and hope that all your dreams come true. Thank you for joining us today, and thank you for those who came into Trenton, for those who are accessing us through the computer. Thank you very much. The State Board meetings are accessible to the public for viewing on a YouTube channel. I would like to advise that YouTube provides readily accessible language translation options with closed captioning. If you are viewing this simulcast at this time, you can use Settings option in YouTube for information about subtitles, auto translations, and closed captioning in multiple languages. I'd like to go ahead and talk about the November 1st, 2023 meeting that we had and get an approval for the minutes. Please, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as they are, please say aye.
Aye.
We need a motion. Thank you very much. And that's why you're the bomb. Thank you very much, Mary Beth Berry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstentions? Patima, you need to abstain?
Yes, I abstain.
Thank you. We'll go ahead, and I just have a little personal announcement. We've all read the news about our Acting Commissioner, Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan, and unfortunately, she will be retiring. And I would like to take a moment to congratulate you on your pending retirement. I know that this is never an easy decision, and you've put so many years into education for the benefit of New Jerseyans, and I would like to thank you for those years and wish you a happy and healthy next phase of your life. I know we get you in January still, so this isn't the last time, but I wanted to tell you thank you very much. Thank you.
President Goldenberg, Vice President Mulvahill, and members of the State Board has truly been one of the highlights of my career to serve in this position and to work with this illustrious board. Your passion and veracity for improving outcomes for students will live on for many years to come, so I look forward to seeing more in January, but I definitely want to take a moment and to say I am eternally grateful. Thank you for your words.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll have more of them, I'm sure, next month unless anyone wants to say anything else at this moment.
I would just mention, President Goldenberg and Acting Commissioner, that your leadership is greatly appreciated, and again, as I mentioned to you earlier during executive session, your journey and your experiences in public education, your contributions should be a model for many professionals in this industry to follow, so wish you the very best in your retirement. I'm sure we'll have more to say in January, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, public testimony. The State Board will receive public testimony on the proposed level amendments to Chapter 14 today in special education. The State Board members scheduled to participate today, well, the ones who will be here are Mary Beth Berry and myself, and for the month of January, the State Board will receive public testimony on the second discussion, level amendments to Chapter 22, student residency. In addition, the State Board has scheduled for open topic testimony, meaning any registered member of the public may provide written testimony on any educational topic of choice or may come in and verbally give it once they've signed up. State Board members scheduled to attend and participate in public testimony for January are Sylvia Sylvia, Mary Beth Berry, Andy Mulvahill, and Ron Butcher, and we'll go on from there. We do not yet have our student representative. I understand there's traffic issues at the time, so we'll let her speak when she gets here, and I would like to go ahead and continue, and please go ahead, Commissioner, with your presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to say again, good morning, President Goldenberg, Vice President Mulvahill, members of the State Board of Education, and to our audience. I hope everyone enjoyed Thanksgiving, and to those who celebrated the Festival of Lights, happy Diwali. Today, the Department will present an overview of the Spring 2023 New Jersey statewide assessments. This administration of New Jersey's statewide assessment represents the second year of comparable data to pre-pandemic levels. One of the many academic consequences of the pandemic was to suspend the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, also known as NJSLA, during the 2020 and 2021 school years. The NJSLA was reinstated in the spring of 2020, and today, the Department provides the statewide results for 2023. I welcome Dr. Schiff, Assistant Commissioner, Division of Teaching and Learning Services, and Mr. Bozani, Director of the Office of Assessments, who will lead the presentation and respond to your questions, please.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning, President Goldenberg, Vice President Mulvahill, and members of the State Board of Education. Today, we will present the results of the Spring 2023 statewide assessments. As a reminder, testing provides a single data point, like checking a temperature. It can tell us the what, but not the why. We will also provide some context for interpreting the results that we will be discussing today. We will start with a brief agenda for walking through the statewide assessment results for the 2022-2023 school year. First, we will discuss the Access for Ls, or English Language Learners. This will be followed by the Dynamic Learning Maps, or DLM, then the results for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, and finally, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. I would now like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Bozani.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff.
Mr. Bozani, if you don't mind me just making just a quick statement. Okay, again, President Goldenberg, I just wanted to mention that the State Board Assessment Committee did meet on this on November 14th. Board members discussed the results of the assessments with the Department, and in terms of the committee, unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but I understand it was a robust discussion, and although there's not specific items that we want to point to in terms of the committee, I just want to acknowledge and thank the Department for taking the time to meet with the Assessment Committee to review this material, and we look forward to the remainder of this presentation, so just wanted to take a moment to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first assessment we will discuss is the Access for Ls. We would like to mention upfront that you will see both the terms "English Language Learner" and "Multilingual Learner" used throughout the presentation. For federal reporting purposes, they are referring to students whose native language is not English as English Language Learners. New Jersey recently adopted, along with many other states, a change to the student group name, changing it to "Multilingual Learners," acknowledging these students are simultaneously learning multiple languages. ACCESS stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State for English Language Learners. The ACCESS assessments serve as New Jersey's English Language Proficiency Assessment. These yearly tests are required for all students identified as multilingual learners from kindergarten to grade 12. ACCESS measures students' English proficiency using a scale that ranges from 1 to 6 in all domains. A score of 1 can be thought of as a beginner score, while a 6 can be thought of as an advanced score. The assessments are administered to satisfy federal requirements under the Every Student Succeeds Act for states to measure student progress towards English language proficiency. Districts also use these results to determine the English Language Learner student placement for the next school year. In New Jersey, a student must earn an overall composite cut score of 4.5 on the ACCESS for Ls to first be considered for exiting from the language instruction educational program. The composite score is only one measure of readiness, in addition to the state standardized process, which includes other measurements such as teacher referrals and recommendations. This slide presents the participation rates and the percent of students by performance level for the ACCESS for Ls assessment. The participation rates for the 2023 administration were very high, with almost all grades demonstrating a greater than 99% participation. As you can see, the data for kindergarten is higher at Level 1. This is expected as a large number of students enter their language proficiency programs in kindergarten. The data also shows increased performance in Levels 5 and 6 at Grades 4 and 5. Again, this is also expected, as it is estimated that students would take between four and five years to begin ready to exit the program. With students starting in kindergarten and needing to achieve the composite score 4.5 to begin the exiting process, the increased results in Levels 5 and 6 at Grades 4 and 5 represent the students beginning that exiting process. I would like to hand the presentation back to Dr. Schiff for the DLM assessment.
Thank you, John. The next program that we will be discussing is the Dynamic Learning Maps, or DLM, assessments. These alternative assessments in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science are designed for students with the most significant intellectual disabilities and are intended to be administered to no more than 1% of New Jersey's student population, as per the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA. This participation rate table shows that participation remains high during the statewide assessment administration and just shy of what it was prior to the onset of the pandemic. The next slide shows the percentage of students by grade for the DLM ELA assessment. The DLM performance levels range from 1 through 4, emerging to advanced. As this assessment is an alternative assessment designed for those students with the most severe cognitive disabilities, having higher percentage of students in Levels 1 through 3 is predictable, given that a Level 4 achievement would trigger a conversation about the students' abilities to take the NJSLA assessment in subsequent years rather than the DLM alternative assessment. While we do not compare performance year to year because of the varying needs of the students in this program, the performance distribution remains similar to previous This next slide reflects the DLM mathematics results. Again, we do not make inferences at the population level for these students since the range of abilities is vast, and the assessments are adaptive, and therefore adjust to meet the skills level of the individual students. Again, the results remain similar to what was observed in prior years. The next slide reflects the DLM science results. The performance results mirror what had been observed with ELA and mathematics. Now, I'll hand it back to Mr. Bozani.
Thank you. Let us move on to the 2023 Let us move on to the 2023 results for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment.
Does anyone have questions at this point about the DLM results? Board members? Because we have so much material, I think we should take it by category.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
The NJGPA was intended to serve as the primary pathway for students to satisfy their graduation assessment requirement. The assessment is aligned to the English Language Arts Grade 10 standards and the Algebra 1 and Geometry standards for the Mathematics component. In the 2023 administration of the NJGPA, 80.5% of students demonstrated graduation readiness in the standards of English Language Arts, and 55% of students demonstrated proficiency in the Algebra 1 and Geometry standards. As we present the student demographic groups, we would like to acknowledge that this is not a complete list of demographics. The four being reported on, African-American students, Asian students, Hispanic students, and white students, were selected because of their larger percentage of the New Jersey student population. While all student demographic groups are important, groups with a low student count have not been traditionally reported, specifically Native Hawaiian or Other Pacific Islander, American Indian or Alaskan Native, Two or More Races, and Other. When reviewing the demographic and student group data, the trends observed in the English Language Arts component of the NJGPA are similar to the performance patterns and achievement gaps that will be shown with the NJSLA. Asian and white students performed above the all-student group, while African-American, Hispanic students demonstrated proficiency below the all-student average. Our multilingual learners, economically disadvantaged students, and students with disabilities performed significantly below the all-student average. Here, we find the performance of the different demographic groups and student groups on the Mathematics component of the NJGPA. Similar to what will be shown for the NJSLA and the results observed on the ELA component of the NJGPA, Asian and white students demonstrated performance above the all-student group, while African-American and Hispanic students demonstrated proficiency below the student average. Economically disadvantaged students, multilingual learners, and students with disabilities all performed below the all-student average. As this will conclude the slides for the NJGPA, are there any questions at this time?
Thank you. Board members?
I'll hold my questions.
Anybody else at this time? Thank you. Please continue, sir.
Well, we'll now examine the multi-year trend analysis for the NJSLA results from 2016 to the present. Moving into 2023, the data shows that there is improvement in performance in all subjects when all grades are aggregated, as seen in the extreme right side of this chart identified in green. It is important to note that the science assessment was field-tested in 2018 and had first operational administration in the 2018-2019 school year, which is why only three data points exist for this trend assessment. There is no data listed for 2020 or 2021, as the NJSLA was not administered during those years due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Resuming administration in 2022, the results were expected and demonstrated performance decline in all subject areas. In 2022, the requirements for participation in Advanced Mathematics Assessment for Geometry and Algebra II changed. Students enrolled in these courses were not required to participate unless it was their first assessment in high school. This had the effect of only the most advanced mathematics students participating in these assessments, and, as we will see in a moment, resulted in large increases in overall performance. This change remained in effect during the 2023 administration. The red dashed line represents the mathematics results for Grades 3 through 8 and Algebra 1 excluding Geometry and Algebra II. This slide shows the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, Levels 4 and 5, on each of the LEA assessments by grade. As we look across the charts, all grades, with the exception of 3rd, showed improvement from the 2022 administration. The performance of Grade 3 students in this year showed no increase from Grade 3 students in the 2022 school year. The Department acknowledges the need to increase these performances, of course, especially with our Grade 3 students. The initiatives under the New Jersey Partnership for Student Success will be discussed more at a presentation immediately after this presentation. We'll discuss specifically how the Department is targeting particular grade levels and subject areas. Our next slide shows the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations on the Mathematics Assessment by grade. With few exceptions, student performance has increased. Grade 7 students and students taking Algebra 1 demonstrated performance consistent with the 2022 administration. As mentioned previously, the Geometry and Algebra II stands out, given the large gains and high performance in both 2022 and 2023 administrations. There are other factors that affected the results of these assessments. As stated previously, in 2022, the requirements of which students must tested changed for Geometry and Algebra II. Students enrolled in those courses were only required to test if it was their first high school assessment in mathematics for them, or if they were enrolled in the course in middle school. Students enrolled in the course but who had already completed their federally mandated testing had the option to participate at their district's discretion. This means that only our most advanced mathematics students were participating in these assessments, and in turn, it would be expected that overall performance would increase. Similarly, for Grade 8 performance, those results are not representative of all Grade 8 mathematics students. Over 30% of all Grade 8 students were enrolled in Algebra 1, and therefore would not have participated in the graded assessment. We'll now examine the performance in disaggregated groups, unless there's any questions.
I think we do have.
If you don't mind going back to Slide 17.
Could you please put it back? Thank you.
And Slide 17, just wanted to get your thoughts on it, and certainly, it's positive to see the positive trend on these charts, on this chart. That said, you know, looking back at 2019, the numbers were certainly higher. What's your view in terms of being able to get back to the sort of pre-COVID assessment achievements as to where we are as compared to today? We're still falling behind the 2019 numbers, and I'm sure we'll hear more about, you know, some of the actions that the Commissioner and the Department has taken to address it, but it is a concern. And when you look at the GPA, is there a correlation between this graph and these results with the, quite frankly, the what I consider to be the poor results in overall graduation readiness at 45%, I mean, I'm sorry, at 55%, or those who are not ready for graduation at 45%? It certainly should be a concern, certainly a concern for me, and I'm sure it's a concern for the rest of the Board, as to how do we prove upon those numbers moving forward.
Yeah, as well as the Department as well. We're all concerned about this. This is going to take time. No one can predict exactly how many years it will take in order to see pre-pandemic achievement levels. I remind the Board and the public that this was a historic reduction in student achievement levels that was not only seen in New Jersey, but across the country. Every state saw this. We saw it not only nationally, but internationally as well. So we see similar rebounding in other states as well. Our targeting of these, which we'll talk about in our next presentation, we'll discuss how we're trying to focus in on particular areas. But we live and work in a state that has over 600 independent districts, each one with a unique population that has to drill down to their own students' population. So these are averages, of course, that every district and every school has a different performance profile based upon this, and that each school is responsible for analyzing what their district's needs are, and we're supporting those efforts through building capacity and reading instruction. We'll talk about the Rapid and Rapid Plus shortly. We also are building additional resources through our High Impact Tutoring that is currently getting off the ground as well, that focuses in on 3rd and 4th grades particularly. Because as we talk about these data, what you'll see is that when we disaggregate based upon race and ethnicity, we see improvements in all areas, in all subject areas that are tested. When we disaggregate based upon multilingual learners, we see increases across all tested areas. When we disaggregate based upon special needs children, children who qualify for special education related services, we see increases, again, on average, across all tested areas. But when we disaggregate based upon grade level, this is where you're starting to see some differentiation. So we're looking at Grade 3, that didn't see the type of jumps that we saw in other areas in ELA. We're also looking Grade 7, as well as Algebra 1. Algebra 1 is a little trickier, because it's an end-of-course assessment. It's not given to every child at the same grade level at the same time, so some children take the Algebra 1 in 7th grade, some take it in 8th grade, some take it in 9th grade, and some don't take Algebra until they are upperclassmen. So our focus as a department needs to be very multifaceted, and that's what we're going to talk about in a moment when we do our presentation.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that discussion, and certainly, your thoughts on the strategy to get back to the 2019 levels. It'll also be helpful to think in terms of a timeline to achieve those levels. So looking forward to furthering this discussion during the later part of the agenda.
Thank you.
If I could just ask a quick question, and I believe Mary Beth is next. The Algebra 1 that you just referred to happens in different grades, but it's listed here, it remains stagnant between last year, which was our first back-to-school statewide time, and this year's. I'm just curious, you said the people taking the Algebra 1 test, are they the people in 7th, 8th, and 9th, whenever they're having the course?
Exactly. Right, right. So they don't take it in one particular year, they take it when they're taking that course.
The actual course.
Yep, which is offered all the way from 6th grade, all the way up to senior in high school.
And they're taking that in the beginning of this school year, or in the middle of this, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, they took it at the end of last year, they took it this year. The scores that we're looking at, that are 18%, and I'm looking at Slide 19, which is up, the scores I'm looking at for 35 and 35, that is based upon this year's test, correct? The 35 for this year.
It was the spring of 2023 administration.
So it was at the end of the course that they took it?
Yes, towards the end of the course, yep.
That is disheartening. All right, thank you. Mary Beth, I'm sorry.
Disheartening is, it's hard to come up with exactly what the right word is here. I know we're going to talk more about what we're doing with the 3rd graders and, you know, the New Jersey Partnership for Student Success, which is identifying our younger kids, but looking at, you know, our older New Jersey Partnership's proficiency assessment.
What page should we go back to, so we can all join you?
Now, I'm looking at the second part of our presentation, and as I'm looking at these test scores, we, I think it's a note, we lowered the passing score already on this test, so that's reflective of these current numbers, is that correct?
No.
The NJSLA was not adjusted, just the NJGPA.
So if I may just bridge the discussion, if we can go back to Slide 13, right? That is the NJGPA overall results, where the cut score was changed. So when we look here, we see in the area of mathematics that approximately 1 out of every 2 students, right, would not be graduation-ready in the area of mathematics at the end of their junior year. However, we have time, we have the summer, right, prior to senior year, and we have senior year to continue to enhance the proficiency of these students in Mathematics and English Language Arts. So while that is a particular class of juniors, and then we move on to Slide 19, you see that, as Board President Goldenberg mentioned, the proficiency rate, those students exceeding expectations, remains at 35, 2 years in a row. So we have a segment of our student population that is excelling, right? Those students are excelling in Mathematics, starting in 6th grade, as Dr. Schiff said, and then we have other students who are not demonstrating that they're excelling at the moment in Mathematics. And so when you aggregate all of those numbers, we're at 35. Is that accurate?
Yes, and I just want to defer to my colleague. 6th grade is the earliest grade? Or is it?
We have a very small handful of students in New Jersey that are exceptionally gifted in Mathematics, and will take Algebra 1 even prior to.
So let's talk about the typical high school student. We've changed our high school program from college career-ready to high school graduation-ready, and I guess, you know, we have these tutoring programs for 3rd graders. I'm concerned, are we doing enough for our high school folks? This is the end of their formal education, and when we're looking at these scores, are we really doing enough? Is there something, some way we need to be more proactive to make sure that they are truly ready to enter the world? This may be the end of their formal education, and I want to make sure that we're, you know, okay, we've got some really great kids that do well in Algebra, that make the scores look higher. I want to make sure that truly, we have young people that are ready to leave formal education, many of them who will. I love our CTE programs, I think there's a lot of great things, but not everyone's availing themselves of that. I think we need to do more for our high school students based on scores not really moving ahead. I'm not confident that we're graduating young people who are really ready to be graduating. And I'd like to see if there are maybe some new initiatives or things that are on the horizon that we can help kids be more prepared, so that when they are done with their schooling, they're ready to enter the world.
So before we proceed, I want to acknowledge that this is one metric, an important metric, but it is one metric, when you look at a student, and the student's preparedness post-graduation from high school. And so we will talk more about our initiatives in the subsequent presentation, but definitely understand the energy we need to continue to give to ensure that every student is graduating as ready as possible for the next chapter of their lives. So understood, thank you.
In fact, I have one follow-up question, just for my clarity, for my own clarity. The cut scores will change or increase for both Mathematics and English Language Arts, is that correct, for the NJGPA?
For the Graduation Proficiency Assessment.
The NJGPA, the cut scores were adopted and amended to be the 725 in the spring of 2023.
Right, 725, which was higher than what the Department initially recommended.
The initial recommendation from the Department was 725.
Okay.
And then you voted 750, and then we return to the 725, considering the effects of the pandemic.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who is that with the A? Andy? Is that you?
It is. Thank you for recognizing me. I just would like to point out one thing that I think is interesting, and if you look at all these scores for all the grades in Math and English, you'll see that they're much, much lower, the percentage of children that are proficient, much, much lower than our graduation test in ELA and in Math. So I don't know that, what miracle we've done, where all of a sudden, when we give a graduation test, kids are scoring so much higher, they're getting, 80% of them are passing the ELA section. And when 3rd- When we're in third grade, we've got like third passing and, you know, not much better throughout. So I contend that we made a mistake and we should fix it in lowering the cut score in the graduation test, because it simply is not consistent with what we see from these tests in the other grades. And I think it's artificially high, and I don't think it serves the children of New Jersey well to lower the standards and give them a certificate that may unfortunately not mean a lot. So I know that my colleagues on the board have disagreed with me when we had this discussion before, but I don't know, maybe in light of what we're, the data we're seeing here, you may give it a second thought. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? I I see, Andy, you're, okay. No one else has their hand up, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. I would like to remind everyone that the test, no matter which test we're looking at, is one test in the in the moment of time. I did read, however, that globally, all assessment tests were lower, but United States, in comparison with other industrialized countries, and they mentioned Singapore and they mentioned South Korea, their scores consistently stayed high during the pandemic. Unfortunately, in this country, ours did not. I think we were ranked, what I read, 23rd globally. So we, as a leader in this country for education, in New Jersey, being traditionally one of the best education systems, we do have so much work ahead of us to do. So I am looking forward to hearing some of the things at the state level we can do to support schools, but let's go ahead with the detailed reports here.
Thank you, Madam President. We will now examine the performance of disaggregated groups of students and how they performed on the 2023 NJSLA. This slide shows the aggregate ELA results broken down by race or ethnicity. All of our student groups demonstrated an increase in performance. Our African-American students demonstrated the greatest amount of improvement, a 3.2% increase, which even exceeded the growth of the all-student average. Hispanic students demonstrated a 2.3% increase, white students a 2.5% increase, and Asian students a 1.8% increase when compared to their 2022 performance. In 2019, it was observed that the difference between the highest and lowest performing student groups was at 45.4%. This grew to 48.3% in 2022, coming out of the pandemic, and is beginning to show some reduction in 2023 at 46.9%. However, clearly, these are very, very large gaps. The following slide, this slide, shows the aggregate ELA results for economically disadvantaged students, English language learners or multilingual learners, and students with disabilities. While all three of these students groups demonstrated increases in performance, they all performed significantly below the all-student average.
This is, I'm sorry, this this is a lot of data, and it's very important data, so I'm not happy to go quickly through it.
Sure.
Could we go back to the slide number that you just finished? Slide 23. So for my, for my, and I hope I did the other numbers by memory correctly, I might have been a little askew with the global, but for for New Jersey, looking at the math student demographics on slide 23, this is an average of all the grades combined?
Yes, disaggregated by racial and ethnic groups.
Did we look at it and and look at it and divide it potentially between urban and rural and suburban to get more of a picture perhaps as well? That would be?
We disaggregated by the by the federal accountability areas, so that includes race and ethnicity, multilingual learners, economically disadvantaged, which at times can be a proxy for different regions throughout the state, as well as children who qualify for special education and related services.
So the answer is no, as we no longer, the answer is no.
District factor groups anymore. Yeah, for, go ahead, explain, because you, I mean, district factor groups, for those who don't know, perhaps.
Oh, yes, so district factor grouping was a categorization used in prior years that took into account various factors when identifying all of the 665 school districts across our state. So the labeling had an alpha system where you were either an A all the way through and a J, and I and a J were considered the highest performing. And so we have moved away from that system, and hence, we are unable to categorize school districts by putting all the urban in one group versus the suburban in the rule.
Right. I think Dr. Johnson brought up last month some questions about DFJ, and in certain ways, that was interesting to look at this as well. But I'm sure that we could ask for that in assessments and just see if that was something that would lend a focus on how we can better support our districts across the state. Thank you, thank you.
If I could just mention, President Goldenberg, it just, just, you know, going back to the slide 23, as you you mentioned, having a 56.6% gap between our black students and Asian students, or just the gap between our black and white students at about 31 or 31%, is just, again, something that we need to really try to address. These gaps are just unacceptable, and I'm sure it's unacceptable to you, Commissioner, and the department, and really need to think through a better strategy to try to close these gaps.
It might be interesting also for Assessment Committee to further granulize either the grade levels or the, you know, elementary versus upper elementary versus high school to to get a better feel for where we especially need to dig in, which seems to be everywhere. Dr. Rika, your hand is up.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at slide 23.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah, I just, slide 23 is different than what's on the screen, I just wanted to point that out when I'm looking at.
Actually, we're, yeah, when we click forward, you'll see that's part of the animation.
Because I referenced these percentages, and I know they're not clearly on the screen as it is on this other graph.
Thank you for that distinction. Were you, did you want to say anything else before we move forward?
No, 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 just wanted to point out that there was, yeah, there you go.
All right, Dr. Rika, your hand is up.
Thanks, Madam President. I also see that Vice President Mulvihill's hand beat me to it, so I'll let him go first, if that's okay with you.
Well, thank you, thanks, Joe, appreciate that. You know, I've been hearing about the achievement gap, which Arsilia just spoke about a second ago. The whole time, I've been on the State Board of Ed. And Arsilia just said, you know, we have to, what can we do about it? And I think we have, we have a solution at hand, and we have seen that the charter schools in the urban districts are, have closed that achievement gap. And I think what we should do, if we really care about the children in New Jersey and care about the fact that only 70% of the African-American students in New Jersey can pass our math test, we should push to expand the charter operation throughout New Jersey, figure out a way to to make it easier for charter schools to open up, still hold them accountable, close those that don't perform. But we have a solution at hand, and I think we should spend an amazing amount of resources, time, and effort to expand the charter school effort, because it's the solution that has worked in the past and is working now. So I'm embarrassed to sit here on the State Board of Ed and say, wow, look, we've increased our African-American students by 2%. We're now at a whole 17% in math. Wow, isn't that wonderful? Now, I know nobody's saying that, I know no one's saying that's wonderful, but we're kind of patting ourselves on the back that we've kind of made some improvements. But 17%, it's tragic, it's a crisis. And so we have a solution, we have charter schools. What are we doing to expand the charter school? For five years, this governor didn't approve a single charter, new charter school or a expansion. Recently, he has, I hope it continues, because we really care about this group of students. We're going to expand the charter school operations throughout the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I could just go back for a minute to what I was saying before, instead of a compilation of K through 12 here, showing the slide 23, if it's possible, could we please have publicly another dissection of this to show by grade what it is? Thank you.
I'll work on that, sure.
Yeah, that'll be helpful.
Thank you, instead of all together. I'm sorry, Dr. Rika, are you ready?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much, and happy holidays again to everybody. And I think I agree with much of what our colleagues have been talking about. I think it also is important to recognize that, as was stated, these are indicators. Certainly, we all agree that there needs to be accountability, and this is a portion that that gives us a window into accountability. It's also representative of real human beings in real situations, and it's a it's a singular sort of measure. But the answer to to closing achievement gaps, to increasing student efficacy, to improving graduation outcomes, is a very, I think, a very far-reaching, and it requires a great deal of investigation that even goes beyond the school wall. So as Vice President Mulvihill was talking about, in terms of being able to create additional opportunities for students to engage in different types of schooling, yes. As the department and the governor have been working on, increased opportunities for before-school, after-school, over the weekends, yes. Making sure all of our children are fed every day, yes. Making sure that there's mental health care services available for our children in all of our schools, yes. Making sure that we set clear and attainable standards at the state level so that teachers, the folks in the classroom instructing the children, understand what they should be moving toward and understand what's going to be measured, yes. It is way more than one singular answer, and I think we can't discount the fact that this, and again, Andy, I agree with you, and I'm not patting, you know, I'm certainly not patting myself on the back here, but I do think that we also need to recognize that we told folks, hey, you know, this was a, this was a global health crisis, an emergency, it it hit certain sectors of our community disproportionately hard. Those folks are making Herculean recovery efforts to come back to where they were prior to missing schools. Remember, we had little children who were never in a classroom, and now we're having them sit for these assessments. So I agree with you, Andy, I'm not disagreeing, but I also think that when we talk about test scores, we must take a much wider lens and recognize that these are not the singular indicators to human success. They are a measure in a point in time, and that's, that must not be lost when we're talking about kids and when we're talking about educational progression. So I agree, let's keep, let's keep pushing and let's keep providing opportunities, but we also have to call out those other systemic societal issues that impact learning, and we can't just cast them aside as if they don't matter, because they do matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Rika. Mary Beth Barry?
I just had one more point that I I wanted to, and I guess I'll make it here. So we're going to have the opportunity to approve districts that have met CUSAC, which we're talking about, you know, singular measures. Well, when I look at instructional programming, it is one of the measures they use for CUSAC determination. We're looking at 10 districts this month. Out of those 10 districts, only three are being approved, seven did not make it. And I am, you know, so I'm listening to this presentation, we're talking about, this is a singular, you know, read on how kids are doing. Instructional programming, these districts that did not, are not being approved this year for this, you know, for CUSAC, they're they're not being approved for instruction and programming. And that's the piece, I think, that we need to really hone in on. We have a problem in structure and programming, we're coming up with things to help third graders. I would love to see these scores broken out by grades, but we need to do better in instruction and programming for our kids.
And thank you for stating that. We share your passion around instruction and programming as it relates to CUSAC, and that's one of five areas. And we know that the score of 80 is needed in order to be deemed a high-performing school district. And so within instruction and program, what you will find is not only the academic test scores, you will find chronic absenteeism, you will find curricula enhancements and alignment with our standards, which the State Board approves. And so our process requires a six-month touch point after every triennial review, which is our commitment to our school districts to ensure that we are providing the technical assistance that is needed to improve outcomes. And so we have CUSAC on the horizon with regulations, and we'll have opportunities at future meetings to discuss that. But I am very pleased with the touch points that we have with districts that require a district improvement plan if a district is not meeting that 80% threshold, to continue to identify ways in which we can support the district, as well as ways in which we can partner the district with other districts that are having success. So that's our commitment with regard to that, but I know we have CUSAC presentation coming up, and they can speak more to that.
Which is great, it's just, is there, you know, what's the correlation? We're looking at these scores.
Sure.
And, you know, and we're seeing, when we're doing the CUSAC reviews, it's just another opportunity to see, we have a problem in instruction and programming, and we need to be proactive and and help make sure that we're lifting kids up, we're got, we're going to hear the program, we're, you know, looking at the high-stakes tutoring, but we need to, across the board, really be looking at all grade levels.
Yes, so I really want to acknowledge, and Dr. Schiff will get into this more later in the, on the agenda, our targeted efforts for grades three and four was truly conceived to allow school districts to utilize their funding in other areas, because we did not want to overspread and say, districts, you can use this funding wherever you need it. We wanted to say, let's look at the students who were not in school, who did not get to see their teachers form words, who were our kindergarten and our first graders at the onset of the pandemic, who are now the third and fourth graders, who we truly want to help make advancement. So while our efforts appear very narrow, they are very targeted. And I'm so excited about the precision with which we are navigating our set-aside investments with the $4.3 billion from the federal government, as well as set-asides earmarked by the governor and this administration to ensure that we are using a laser-like focus to move. Now, as Dr. Rika said, you know, we were all affected by the pandemic, so pre-pandemic, we weren't where we wanted to be. And now, we continue to make strides, not only to return to pre-pandemic levels, but to exceed those levels. The amount of time is going to vary. Similarly, when children learn how to walk, it varies. And for people who have multiple children, you know that even within one household, two children are not alike. So we're speaking about 1.4 million students. And as long as we at the department continue to remain committed and monitor and support the programs that we put in place, we truly believe that we're going to see exponential growth over time. So I'm excited about that, and I know that more will be shared this morning.
And it should also be added to the list that Dr. Rika said about, you know, not having adequate small classes with not having enough teaching professionals to be able to help students. I see there's a hand up, I can't tell, there's no name there.
It's Ned Johnson.
It's Ned. Ned, Dr. Johnson, sir, would you like to speak? There he is.
Yes, good. Just a quick question, could you talk about the layer information or instruction program?
Could you please repeat your question, because you came in and out a little bit, like the ocean waves?
Yep, I'm out in the, down south here. But I was just asking if they could detail, I know, instruction and programs. Can you talk a little bit about what are in that area?
If I could reiterate your question, you said that you, I'm sorry, I still didn't, we couldn't, did anyone catch it up on the microphone side?
I think you may have been asking for more description about instruction and program from CUSAC.
Were you asking about more information about instruction and programming in CUSAC, Dr. Johnson? Is that your question? Yes, the answer is yes. Who's gonna answer that? I'm sorry.
We will answer that during the section for items for consideration when we speak about CUSAC.
Thank you, and I believe past President Aponte has something else.
Just to mention, I greatly appreciate all the comments by my colleagues here, and I certainly agree with Vice President Mulvihill when he said these gap numbers are tragic. That said, I'm interested also in knowing more about the multiple measures that Dr. Rika mentioned. And so maybe, maybe following up this presentation with other measures that we ought to be looking at so we could have a more comprehensive view of student success. And certainly recognizing that, based on all the previous data that you provided today, that there's, there are significant challenges at different grade levels. But are there other measures that could be shared with us, as Dr. Rika mentioned, that will give us a more, more insight into what the progress that are, that's being made within districts, or some of the measures that may tell a more comprehensive story about our student, student progress? Dr. Rika, hopefully, you know, that touched on what you were recommending. There's a hand up there. Dr. Rika.
Thank you, Dr. Rika.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Mr. Aponte, as an example, you know, and this is, this is one that I think that can be achieved, looking at attendance rates and chronic absenteeism, and then drawing a connection potentially not necessarily causal, but correlative to increase gaps. Looking at out-of-school suspensions, looking at disproportionality related to out-of-school suspensions, looking at connections, as Vice President Mulvihill talked, you know, talked about, one of the major factors that he knows that extraordinary benefit is, in a charter school environment, the requirement for connection between parents and guardians, the home and the school. Looking at these types of indicators can give us greater insight into the ways that we can approach, or we can assist school districts to approaching these types of challenges. Another one that is, you know, right, kind of connected to CUSAC, is standards implementation. Who has adopted the standards? Who has updated their curricular expectations? Who has purchased and made sure that the students are being taught what is being tested? Those are exactly the types of things, Arslavio, that we could be looking at, maybe be able to provide assistance through, through the county offices, who are always there to provide technical assistance.
About two weeks ago, the New York Times editorial board put out an article about learning loss that cited attendance as being one of the major factors in learning loss, and particularly through the pandemic, and students are returning to pandemic, from the pandemic, and not returning in the numbers in which we were experiencing pre-pandemic.
And how to reverse chronic absenteeism. Yeah, I saw that. Anybody else at this time? So we've given you other things to please come back to us with, and that would be very helpful, and hopefully, we can have more information.
We'd be happy to.
Thank you. Let's keep going.
Okay. Slide 24, please. This slide shows the aggregate mathematics results of economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. While all three of these student groups demonstrated increase in performance, they are all performing significantly below the all-student average. This slide shows the aggregate science results, broken down by race and ethnicity. All of our student groups demonstrated increase in performance with an increase of 1.7 statewide. New Jersey's white and Asian students demonstrated the greatest amount of improvement, a 2.6% increase. This growth was greater than the all-student growth average in science. African-American students demonstrated 1.5% increase, while Hispanic students demonstrated 8.9% increase. The next slide shows.
I'm sorry, can you give us a moment to digest this? It's so much great information, but again, this is K through 12 compiled together, right?
This is the three grade levels.
The three that are tested.
That are tested, that's correct. That aggregates those.
Would it be difficult for the next time that we discuss this, to break it into those three grades?
Yes, that, that's what we'll do with all of the disaggregation. We'll disaggregate again based upon grade level for all of the disaggregated groups.
And just please repeat the three grade levels.
Yes, John.
For science, we test at grades five, eight, and 11.
Thank you.
Math and, and English?
For mathematics, it's grades three through eight, and then at Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. For English Language Arts, it's grades three through nine.
Thanks.
All right, the next slide, on slide 26, shows the aggregated, the aggregate science results of economically disadvantaged English language learners, or multilingual learners, and students with disabilities. Again, while all three of these students groups demonstrated increase in performance, they all are performing significantly below the all-student average. Our next section focuses in on the performance levels for New Jersey Students' Learning Assessment. This slide compares the percentage of students in each performance level for ELA from 2022 to 2023. There are five performance levels for ELA, with levels four and five designated as either meeting or exceeding expectations. To better evaluate this data, we would like to focus attention on the change in levels column. Favorable changes in this column are displayed in green, while unfavorable changes are displayed in red. For changes in Level 1 and Level 2, negative values are colored as green, as this indicates that less students are performing at the lowest levels. In, in the column, change in Level 4 and 5, positive values are colored in green, indicating that most students have performed, have demonstrated performance consistent with meeting or exceeding expectations. The data shows that, with the exception of Grade 3, in 2023, there are more students achieving at the highest performance levels in ELA. Additionally, in many grades, there has been a shift of students out of the lowest-performing levels.
But between Levels 1 and 2, Grade, Grade 9, Grade 6, is that the way that we're interpreting this? Grade 6 and Grade 9 between Levels 1 and 2 were?
Actually had increases in those particular performances. So this looks at the distribution of scores.
Are you on slide 28?
Yes, we're on slide 28, but we've animated it to make it easier.
Oh, because I'm looking at the whole thing that was sent.
Yeah.
Why, okay, that's not available to the public anymore.
It just pulls out those, those particular sections. So this is a lot of data on the screen.
It is.
So we tried to.
So tell me what you were saying, sir, about?
So if we move forward on the slide, what this shows, it just pulls out the, the important data that shows the changes. Green means there's less students in the lower performing areas. Or it means more students in the higher performing areas.
So just for clarification, we kept column 1, 4, and 8. So if you want to indicate that on the hard copy, Board members.
1, 4, 4, 1, 4, and 8.
Kept those three columns. And just compressed it to look at levels, changes in Levels 1 and 2, and then 4 and 5.
Yep. So again, this disaggregates not only by the grade, but also by the distribution of scores, whether more students are performing in the higher levels, or more students are performing in, or less students performing in the lowest levels. This gives you even a deeper sense of how the distribution of scores are with, throughout each of the grade levels, which is additional information to the average score.
So in, in this, because I am confused, I beg your pardon, the green is good.
Green's good.
But in changes between 1 and 2 in column 4, the negative numbers, the green, is?
Still good, yep. But the red is not good. So if you look at Grade 6.
Please, yep.
And Grade 9, we saw more students in Levels 1 and 2. We also saw in Grade 6 and 9, more students in the highest performing areas. So it made the average actually kick higher. But in Grade 3, where we didn't see the average move, we saw that there wasn't movement in Levels 1 and 2, and a slight decrease in, in the number of students in the highest performing levels.
So just to pause there, and I know, remember, Rika has his hand up, so with Grade 3, as you were explaining, what that says is that students at Level 3 would have increased, which is not shown there, because we have a slight decrease in Levels 4 and 5, and we're flat at Levels 1 and 2.
Yeah, there's very little movement in, in Grade 3.
Right.
In either side, yeah.
Yes, but it takes into account that small dip from Levels 4 and 5.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just trying to.
Dr. Rika's.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President.
Just a quick question, do we have, do we have data that tell us if a, if a test taker is within one or two items from movement in a particular level? For instance, students who maybe are, were one, one test item away from being a Level 3. So that we have a sense of how, how, you know, our northeast arrow is, is kind of running? Is that something that the department looks at, or is that more at the LEA level?
That would be much more at the LEA level with the student roster reports.
Okay.
By the average score and the individual student scores for the district or the school.
Okay. And then, and then just.
We don't report here the scale, I'm sorry, Dr. Rika, we, we don't report the scale scored mean, but certainly, that is a statistic that districts can use. It's a more granular statistic to determine improvement or decline that districts typically use in lieu of the levels.
Okay, thank you. And, and so, if I'm thinking about, for instance, English Language Arts, and if I'm a, a student who struggles with foundational literacy, and meaning, I'm, I'm a grade level behind. Let's say I'm, I'm taking the assessment at the fourth grade level, I'm in fourth grade, but my reading level is at the third grade level. Am I going to struggle mightily until the time that I catch up to the grade level on these assessments?
I don't.
They're not adaptive to my reading level.
Correct, they're not adaptive, but the reading level and the Lexile word count, they're all taken into consideration in the development of the assessment.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Other questions at this time?
I'm gonna ask for clarification. If we can look at Grade 6, which has a positive red number, and then we can look at Grade 3 that has a negative red number, if you can just explain the difference and why we have the two colors, but yet we have a positive and negative with the same color.
Right, so what, what we want to see is less students in the lowest levels, Levels 1 and 2. So if we see more students in Level 1 and 2, or a positive increase in Levels 1 and 2, that's not what we want to see, and therefore, it's coded as red. However, on the other side, we want to see more students in the higher levels, or grade, or Levels 4 or 5. And in Grade 3, we actually saw less students in that particular level. And as a result, it's a negative, it's a decrease, and that's a red for the highest levels.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to ensure that that was clear for our public.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we move on to, let's talk about the, the math performance, John.
Slide 29?
Yeah, we're gonna move to slide 29.
I think our battery froze for a moment.
Maybe we can have some assistance?
Can you advance this?
From tech to advance the slide?
Oh, there we are. If we can go back one?
Yep.
Thank you.
This slide compares the percentage of students in each performance level for mathematics from 2022 to 2023. Similar to ELA, there are five performance levels with Levels 4 and 5 designated as meeting or exceeding expectations. Again, to better evaluate these data, we would like to focus attention on the change in levels column. Same as the previous slide, the green numbers indicate a favorable shift, while the red numbers indicate an unfavorable shift. There we go. Evaluating the mathematics results, the data shows that overall, there has been an increase in performance, with an increase in percentage of students in Levels 4 and 5. Grade 7, I'm sorry, in Levels 4 and 5, as well as, in most cases, lessening in Levels 1 and 2. Grade 7 math is an exception to this trend, as not only did fewer students in 2023 achieve Levels 4 or 5, but more students demonstrated performance Levels 1 and 2, as indicated in red in both of those areas for Grade 7.
It's interesting to have that in Level 8, Grade 7. I would expect it at Grade 8. I would expect it in Grade 8, since more students are taking Algebra. But at Grade 7, what do you think, why do you think we have those negative numbers?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have a good answer as to why that is. The overwhelming balance of scores showed improvement, and the distribution showed movement. So we see more in the highest levels, less in the lowest levels, which is what we want to see. Algebra 1, if you look at that data, it actually split. We had more students in the highest performing, but also more students in the lowest performing. So the distribution kind of spread out for, for Algebra 1. But again, these, these data, once you aggregate them at the state level, you lose what happens at the local level. Who are the kids that are in those particular classes that may be struggling in one particular school? Another school may have very different results than this. So it's very unique to the individual context of each school. But we can look at trends, and that, that's why we, we need to be sensitive to, where do we allocate resources? How do we present our support? And we're trying to use the data to inform that, that decision.
Dr. Schiff, why is it that we didn't, we clearly have it broken out as not yet meeting, partially meeting, approaching expectations, meeting expectations, and exceeding? But on the examples here, we're completely leaving out a whole segment of individuals approaching expectations, so their stats aren't included in what we're identifying here. Why is that?
It's, it would be much more difficult to understand how it would move if you looked at the middle column.
But the middle wasn't there yet either, it was approaching expectations. It wasn't meeting, which is the fourth column that is there.
We could run the analysis, if that's an interest of the assessment committee, we could provide you with that data. But what we tried to do was to analyze, how is the distribution moving? Is it moving more to the right, which means that all students are, are showing improvement? Is it moving to the left, that we're not seeing that type of improvement across all students? Or is it mixed?
Could you just open it up again to show slide 29 with all the columns? So is there a generic answer as far as approaching? Did we do better? Was it the even? I mean, certainly.
Well, you'd have to go back to the average in order to draw that conclusion. But looking at the, the polls, looking at either side, you get a better sense of how the, the distribution of scores moved or didn't move, or to help inform our decision-making about what, what's actually happening. Because if you just looked at the average, Madam President.
But it's not the average, it's approaching. So the average is meeting, which is the fourth column. So we've left out a whole segment.
Yeah, it was intentional in order to help us understand our kids moving into the higher two areas or, or out of the lower two areas, which is what we wanted to see. So that, that was intentional. But if you'd like us, again, to run the analysis that we include level three with level one and two to see what that movement is, we can certainly provide that to the, to the assessment committee. But this analysis does inform how the distribution of, of scores moves from one year to the next.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? No. Oh, we've got Dr. Rika's hand up. I see you, Joe. Go ahead.
Sorry, chock full of questions. And just, just for refreshing my, my memory, my recollection, we expect that all students will sit for the assessment throughout the state of New Jersey, right?
Right? Correct.
So that also includes students with disabilities who are then provided with the appropriate accommodations and modifications to engage the test.
That's correct.
Does it also include English language learners who? And, and if it does, is there a time, a grace period for them to, to learn the language? Or do we give them a test in their native language?
So it's, the answer to that is different for English Language Arts versus Math and Science. For mathematics and science, we do offer a Spanish translated version of the assessment. For English Language Arts, it is only available in English. For all of the assessments, we do have the directions that the proctor would read aloud, translated into the top 10 languages represented in New Jersey. But the test itself is only translated into Spanish for math and science. As for a grace period, for English Language Arts, students who have entered the country in a New Jersey school for the first time within that school year are provided an exception from requiring to test on English Language Arts. They are still required to test in math and science, however.
Is that a study for federal? Go ahead, I'm sorry, Joe.
That's okay. It's so, so the math and science also contains written language, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Madam President, to your question to the state and federal, we are granted the waiver, the flexibility from the federal reporting to allow students to have exemption on ELA in their first year.
Do we, you know what? I'll, I'll, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Is it, is there a reason why it's only Spanish?
When we put together the ESA Plan back in 2017, the constraints that were put around the languages that the assessment would be translated into identified Spanish as the prominent language meeting the criteria established. The number of students that we have, well, every student matters. Let me start by saying that. But when we're looking across for an assessment translation, we have very low numbers of students in other languages.
And, but that was assessed six or seven years ago? Is that, there's a large increase in population in a lot of different languages now over near us, Creole? And I'm wondering, is that looked at again periodically? Or is it coming up soon? And I mean, I'm Spanish, so good. But also, I know that there, there's other languages that are, have seen huge increases, certainly in seven years.
Understood, and it is, it is generally looked at each assessment cycle and the feasibility of the translations occurring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could go forward to slide 30, please. Thank you. This slide compares the percentage of students in each performance level for science from 2022 to 2023. Unlike ELA and math, science only has four performance levels, with levels three and four considered proficient. Again, to better evaluate this data, we'd like you to focus your attention on the change in level columns. As we've seen in previous slides, the green numbers indicate a favorable shift, while the red numbers indicate an unfavorable shift. Here in science, we show that in all grades, more students demonstrated performance level in three and four and less students in grades one and two across all three grade levels for that particular assessment.
So as a point of clarification, is it fair to say that the movement from levels one and two may have actually landed in levels three, and the students in level three may have advanced to level four? Or the reverse?
Well, yeah, the average movement moved forward that way. That's correct.
Thank you.
They could have jumped, you know, kids could have jumped multiple levels. But yes, the movement is, is to the right.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is improving. We'd like to take a moment just to emphasize the main points throughout the presentation. Overall, student performance is beginning to improve when we compare it to the 2022 results. However, there is still much work to be done in supporting our students and educators moving forward. The gains that we're seeing this year are a credit to the New Jersey's dedicated educational staff. Not only are they supporting our students to recover educational loss, but they are providing their students with social and emotional supports as well. The impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency were unprecedented, and our educators have and continue to rise to the challenge. With the implementation of the initiatives under the New Jersey Partnership for Student Success, or NJPSS, it's anticipated that our performance will continue to increase. The department will continue to partner with our LEAs to provide New Jersey students with the best equitable education as possible. We thank you, and we appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Other questions at this time?
Just a comment. I mean, certainly, a lot of data we cover here today. And again, as I mentioned earlier, I'm pleased to see the, the positive trend from 22 to 23, but acknowledge that there's so much more work to be done. Even just to get back to the 2019 numbers, never mind, as the commissioner mentioned, exceeding those numbers.
Yes.
So, but thank you for the presentation and materials.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to just thank the, the department for this presentation, and also all the teachers, parents and guardians who are working with our children, you know, to increase their progress every year. And you know, I, I, I say this, and I've said this over the years. We have these reports, you know, do these numbers. We regularly, and Andy's right, there, there are really significant concerns that we see over and over and over again. And until we, as a, as a state community, maybe even a national community, recognize that there are issues that we must address within the lives of our children in order to achieve the types of academic growth and results that we'd like to see. We cannot look away from the societal impact of other issues within communities, within households, you name it. There is a unique experience for every one of the children who sat for that test. And we really need to, and again, I, I recognize this beyond the department, and in many cases, it's even beyond local education agencies. It's something that we would have to do collaboratively together. And again, attendance, attrition, overall wellness, these are, these are indicators that we must look as, as we, we seek to educate and elevate our children as a whole. So I'll just keep advocating for that every year at the end of this presentation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Rika. I think we all would agree with that. Fatima Burnham Watkins, please.
And literally, I think, Dr. Rika, you took the words out my mouth. My silence allowed journalists with a lot of data to take in. And it's a real charge to all of us to what Joe just said. Like, how do we continue to get underneath these results? Give us a moment in time. There is a, a child with different needs underneath all of these. And so how do we just continue to push here? And, and it is also just making me think about the other work that we're doing and the department is doing to address teacher shortages, et cetera. All of those things are also playing out in, in how our students are being able to perform on some of these. So just everything Joe just said with an exclamation point. Thank you to the department for all the work in helping us to see these. And we have a lot more work to do.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands up. If I'm mistaken, please say so at this time. And I, I think that we, we do have our student here. And if you're okay to wait to let us finish the next presentation, or do you need to go back? I don't know how long the next, I mean, it's short, it feels like, but.
15, 20 minutes.
Do you, 15, 20? But if you need to go now, we, we can let, we can circle back. All right. Thank you. I would also like to call, please, on Board Member Bobrov, if you wanted to talk about the other committee meeting that we had and just mention it.
We had a committee for the policy committee discuss changes on chapters two and three. We will be going back today. Greater scope going, I going.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, and, yes. Yes, please, please.
So, yes, and again, thank you, Mr. Bozani, and thank you, Dr. Schiff. And as I read, feel free to stand for the 10 seconds. I know you've been sitting for quite a while, and thank you. As a fitting extension to our assessment presentation today, the department will provide you with an update on statewide initiatives designed to quicken learning acceleration. The New Jersey Partnership for Student Success is the department's strategic response to this significant challenge. It is also a system of supports and programs designed to address critical educational and mental health challenges exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Dr. Schiff and Lisa Habril, Executive Director in the Division of Teaching and Learning Services, will provide an update on our learning acceleration efforts, including the crucial programs designed to directly influence positive outcomes, please.
Thank you, and good morning once again. It's our pleasure to speak with you today, again, about a department's effort to support learning acceleration under one significant initiative, the New Jersey Partnership for Student Success. As you may recall from our presentation in October, this expansive initiative was designed to leverage and activate state and local resources and partnerships to address critical educational and mental health challenges exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Fundamentally, this is how we are addressing learning acceleration as a state. We're going to be covering each of the different areas of the NJPSS, which is Learning Acceleration Partnerships, Educator Empowerment, Universal Preschool, and Youth Mental Health. If we go to the next slide, we're trying to approach the impact on students from this historic pandemic in a very comprehensive way. We're being, trying to be student-centered with this, not just looking at any single initiative, but putting together multiple initiatives that, that address five different areas, which are the spokes in, in, in this particular wheel. My colleague is going to talk first about learning acceleration, and then we'll, we'll talk more specifically about each of those areas in a moment. Ms. Habril.
At its very core, the partnership is committed to helping students excel, and the resources offered through the partnership are designed to bridge the educational gaps created by the pandemic. We're all acutely aware of the critical role that learning acceleration, of course, learning acceleration can play in addressing the needs of students and the role the department plays in catalyzing those efforts through the NJPSS initiatives. High-impact tutoring has been identified as a profoundly effective research-based method that schools can use to optimize learning acceleration. Prior to the launch of the grant this summer, we spent a lot of time evaluating the research, the growing body of research around tutoring, and we highlighted the most critical, essential practices and the criteria for highly effective programs. We also took very careful note of what other states were doing. We looked at their state-level tutoring programs. We found their successes, their challenges, and we carefully considered with our stakeholders and our state assessment data the most important pieces, the area of focus that we really needed to, to center on around this initiative. Commissioner spoke of this discussion and this consideration in our earlier presentation. So as a result of that careful consideration and all that discussion and research, we crafted and released our $52 million tutoring initiative this past July. And the first week in November, we awarded the majority of the funds, about 80%, which equaled $41 million. We awarded that to 243 local education agencies to implement their proposed programs, which, as we mentioned, prioritize students in grades three and four, but many, many applications included tutoring supports to students at other grade levels, including high school, to the question that Ms. Barry raised earlier. So high school students are receiving those services and supports as well. Additionally, you'll recall the inclusion of the evidence-based literacy, foundational literacy elements that we included in our New Jersey Student Learning Standards in ELA this past October. That's incredibly significant and in service to those revisions, those most important revisions to English Language Arts, and to expand the research-based teaching, teaching and learning of, and writing of evidence-based reading and writing to all students. The department is excited to offer another learning acceleration initiative in service to reading and writing. The Reading Acceleration Professionally Integrated Development, it's a mouthful. So we affectionately refer to that program as the Rapid Program. The Rapid Program and the Complementary Rapid Plus Program are designed to expand teachers' working knowledge of how proficient reading and writing can be developed, which is most essential, and how student outcomes can be actually improved through effective identification and evidence-based interventions when a, when a problem is surfaced. The first initiative, the $2 million Rapid Program, is designed for educators of grades kindergarten through third grade. And this program was launched with great success early October, which is just incredibly exciting. Free trainings have been provided for educators in every single county across the state. Hundreds, several hundred of educators have already taken early advantage of this program, and it will continue to run throughout, throughout the winter months. The Complementary $3 million Rapid Initiative, or I'm sorry, the Rapid Plus Initiative, is targeting teachers of upper elementary grades. And this is really important. We talked about what happens to students in fourth grade if they're not proficient readers by this time. And this initiative, in partnership with our state universities, is developing reading skills in students that haven't mastered proficiency in reading and writing by this grade level. So as I mentioned, we're partnering with universities, and this will begin statewide in January, which is really exciting news. Both of these initiatives are designed to support and to reach thousands of educators statewide, which is, which is phenomenal. We've also been partnering very, very closely with our county offices. And so if something were to arise in ACUSAC and IMP, we couple that district, we work closely with our county office to couple that district with the support moving forward. So that's a really exciting advantage of having this program in place. Another key learning acceleration initiative that's featured on this slide is our, the Office of Special Education is offering summer learning institutes, or I'm sorry, education learning institutes. The Summer Learning Institute was offered this past year for the first time, providing educators, families, and other key stakeholders with the learning opportunities and resources devoted to this population of students. And building off the overwhelming success this past summer of those summer institutes, the department is now offering a Winter Learning Institute, providing over 20 different professional learning experiences, January through February and late January through early February. And these sessions are designed specifically for school leaders to learn about topics such as New Jersey's tiered system of support, a very important strategy for interventions, also strategies for trauma-informed classroom instruction, and improving preschool outcomes. Additionally, Dr. Edward Fergus at Rutgers University, he'll be, he's an esteemed professor who will be presenting on significant disproportionality in special education programs during that institute. So very exciting, very exciting initiatives.
Before we move on to the next slide, these are very exciting programs. You know, certainly, High-Impact Tutoring, Rapid, and Special Educational Learning Institutes are really great initiatives. And I'm assuming the, the grant that you referred to were the federal grants that help fund these programs. But the federal grants are running out in 2024. How do you, have you had discussions or started discussions around how to continue some of these programs, particularly if they're showing some benefits or, or, or helping to really address this challenge of learning loss?
That'll be the question of the budget development process, and I would defer to our commissioner.
Yes, so as we understand the expiration of the federal funds, we also have taken the approach of triaging what is occurring in our schools. So the thought. the approach of triaging what is occurring in our schools. So the thought is to provide the targeted services, get students to where they need to be, and then watch them continue to thrive. The notion of having high-intensity tutoring every year for this large group of students is not how this was designed, and so we see a narrowing of scope going forward, and districts using their federal funds as well as state funds to address students' needs as they arise.
Speaking of state funds, I know we're fastly approaching the budget season, so I certainly would, would recommend that these initiatives be included in, in the budget request for the next academic year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to reiterate before we continue with this, the 243 districts out of the 650 districts that we have, they are the ones who got $44 million, and that was based on elementary students?
A little bit lower, about 41 million, and it was, it was targeted, the emphasis was third and fourth grade, but districts did have flexibility to put into their grant application other grades, and, and it's not just an ELA initiative, it's not just an ELA initiative, it could also be mathematics, it's based upon what the district needs are. We, we knew as we were developing this that districts had different needs, and to provide an additional flexibility that they could assign to tutors in ways that they felt would best address their needs was, was very important.
And so out of the, all the districts in New Jersey, did the 243 districts have any sort of parameter that they had that the other districts didn't in order to get some of this funding?
They did have, they required to serve students in grades three and four, three and/or four, so I should say. We did have some charter schools that served four through six, so we had all different kinds of combinations. So requirement was that they had to serve students at those grade levels, and we also integrated their state assessment results from the previous year.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. And then for the reading and writing for the Rapid Program, I wrote down three million, I think that's what you said.
That's the Rapid Plus, and our Rapid Initiative is two million, so collectively it's a $5 billion investment.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to emphasize that this is based upon evidence-based approaches on learning how to read. So it dovetails with the work that we did with our revised standards that you all approved recently. It, it aligns with what we feel is the need coming out of their testing analysis, that this is where, this is where our priority support is, is needed and necessary, and, and again, I do want to emphasize that this is just one of many different type of initiatives that are going on. So if we can move forward to talk just briefly about partnerships, Lisa indicated that we have partnerships with our Rapid Programs, absolutely. We're working with five colleges and universities from around our state to support the upper elementary, the Rapid Plus Program. We have nine partners who are providing services across the state for high, for Rapid, the Early Elementary Program. So that's happening currently right now. We couldn't do this work without additional partners, whether it's partnering with the county offices, whether it's partnering with individual districts. We have a call to action, as, as you all are aware from the commissioner and our governor, to ask for additional volunteers moving forward. We also know that balance, the overwhelming balance of volunteerism occurs at the local level. There are parents that are supporting their children in their schools, they're helping out day-to-day, whether it's raising money for cultural arts activities, helping to supervise field trips, or being guest readers in classrooms. Schools are comfortable places for volunteers when they're known to the community, when they're helping, when volunteers are helping their community, their neighbors' children, and, and their own children, whether it's parents, grandparents, other supportive members of the community, and that continues to move forward as well.
So the colleges, the nine that are doing this currently?
Five.
Five.
Rapid Plus, right.
Are they doing this in their program for certifying teachers? Is that how they're assisting? Do you want to give a shout-out to them for volunteering?
Well, they're, they're actually part of the memorandum of agreement that we have with them to supply the services. So we, this is, this is the $3 million investment that Lisa was referring to. That's, you know, very, very important that they're doing some work. And by the way, an added benefit was that there were some conversations with all of them about some of the, some of their techniques and how they're, how they're moving forward with it. We do have some, some changes as a result of the Chapter Nine regulations that you recently approved, that also imposes upon EPPs or educational program providers to ensure that there are focus instruction for pre-service teachers in learning how to read as well.
So do they assist the student directly, or do they assist the teaching profession directly?
They're building the capacity of teachers in upper elementary on evidence-based approaches for reading. This is free professional learning, and by the way, it is multiple, multiple sessions that teachers could go through that are all based upon the development of phonics, phonemic awareness, comprehension skills, vocabulary development, fluency, all of the pillars of, of learning how to read, and we also set aside leadership professional development too, because it's not just enough to train the teachers, you need to ensure that principals, directors, supervisors, superintendents, whoever wishes to participate in those leadership seminars, also have the opportunity to learn what their, what their teachers are doing as well. And that's mirrored both in the Rapid, as well as the Rapid Plus Program.
Okay, and so this professional development that we're providing?
This is professional development, Rapids are professional development.
Thank you. Dr. Rucka.
Thank you, Madam President, and Dr. Schiff, thank you so much. This is, this is exactly kind of, you know, dovetails to the commentary that I was making previously. And one of the areas that I think that, again, for, for all of us on the board, universal preschool and access to high-quality early learning childcare is a critical component of being literate and, and ready to, to learn when children arrive in kindergarten. Making sure that students wherever they live have access to universal pre-K should be an imperative for us as a state, just as making sure that all children who attend school can eat breakfast and can eat lunch. You know, these are the types of things that we can do that can go a long way to helping to both allow all children to rise, increase those test scores, close, close achievement gaps, but more importantly, also to, to grow as healthy humans. And, you know, I think what, when we take this holistic approach, and that's why I love this slide with partnerships, it does go a long way to creating more community-based school, so that we all see, of all of us, regardless of whether or not we have a child in our neighborhood school, to that school doing well. And again, I think, you know, I thank you, I thank the department for the leadership here. Seeing these, these opportunities are really important, and I do hope that throughout the state, that local education agencies and boards of education recognize that you are, you're investing in your children, and you're making sure that they're mentally well, that they have access to supports and services, that parents and guardians have access to supports and services or a roadmap to get them, that we can get kids in high-quality pre-K experiences, all children, no matter what. I mean, you all know, some of you probably pay thousands and thousands of dollars a month for, for high-quality pre-K programs if you didn't have a school district that offered it. And, and some of you maybe even had to pay your local school district to participate in the universal pre-K program that exists. And then others also have half-day kindergarten. All of these types of variations contribute to an inconsistency in learning and make the, the challenge harder as we get down. So that, great job, thank you very much.
Can I add to, to Dr. Rucka's comment? And again, as I pointed out earlier, you know, last year, the governor provided additional funding towards universal pre-K. I, I would encourage, again, as we have, start discussions for next year's funding round, that continuing to expand universal pre-K throughout the state would be important component of our overall budget request.
Thank you. If you can advance to that universal pre-K slide.
Yep, I was going to say that you are stealing our thunder on universal preschool.
Question quickly before we move on, the professional development. So 243 of, like, the 600 districts are able to access that, is, no?
No, 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 the 243 were the awards for the Notice of Grant Opportunity, the NGO for the High-Impact Tutoring. The Rapid and Rapid Plus Programs are offered to any district in the state free of charge.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Anybody.
Thank you for clarifying, good.
Thank you. So, I'm, I'm smiling because you, you were saying the same type of things that we were saying. The importance of providing universal preschool for all children cannot be shouted out enough. It is so, so important, a true game changer. And just to, just to share with you some news from mid-October, the department was pleased to announce that 26 new LEAs received the Preschool Expansion Aid, or the PEA, to establish or expand access to high-quality preschool programs during next school year. This means that over 1,700 more seats are going to be available in the state of New Jersey. 1,700 more three- and four-year-olds will have free access to high-quality universal preschools that they didn't have prior to. And the governor is committed to making that an experience for all three- and four-year-olds throughout the entire state. We could go on and on about the benefits of, and what the research says about the benefits of exposing children to high-quality preschool. It's very, very important. By the way, the third graders that we talked about before, they were our kindergartners in the March of 2020. So when schools shut down in March of 2020 due to the pandemic, our third graders that were tested, that we just talked about, which were last year's third graders, this year's fourth graders, were kindergartners, were five and six years old during that particular period of time. This next round will be the first round where preschoolers will be assessed through the, the state assessment results. So the importance of universal preschool in terms of, of providing additional access and support for all children, starting at grade three, is another very, very important pillar in our New Jersey Partnership for Student Success and how we're addressing the pandemic learning loss moving forward.
Is the intention to go ahead and, for those districts that don't have full-day kindergarten, I know there, there are many, to also get funding for that so they can?
I don't think there's many now that have half-day programs.
There were 45 or so.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's down a little bit further, but, but no, there isn't, there isn't money set aside to moving from half-day to full-day kindergarten at this point. Districts would have to raise their levy or, or do other financial, financial work in order to fund and support both ensuring that they have the facilities, as well as they have the staff supplies in order to implement full-day kindergarten if they don't have that already.
I would say it's important to be parodying. I think we skipped a very important slide, Slide Six.
Yep.
Yeah, if you, just, just in terms of universal pre-K, while we're on that subject, just, again, recognizing that, that's important, continue to expand and, and continue to scale up universal pre-K. In your strategic plan, do you include trying to identify or certify more teachers? Because that's going to certainly be a challenge in expanding capacity if you don't have qualified teachers.
Absolutely, and the teacher shortage is top of mind for, for all of us as we move forward. And there's been a great deal of effort, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't want to, please.
Which is Slide Six.
Yes, which is Slide Six, which we have right, right here, right up here. So, you know, a few very important things, and I'm going to throw it over to Lisa in, in just a moment, but there was a lot of work in Chapter Nine this year to try to add additional flexibilities while maintaining high quality and not to drop the quality of, of the process of teachers. Teachers make the world go around, and having the best educated instructional staff in front of our students is the, is the key indicator of, of improved student performance. It's the teacher that makes a significant difference, and we all know that. Lisa?
I'll just echo the sentiments that empowered educators are really essential for student success, they're the secret sauce. And so the partnership includes initiatives that strengthen the teacher profession statewide. The department has aligned all of our teacher recruitment, preparation, and certification efforts in service to learning acceleration by strengthening the educator workforce and building a more robust teacher, and diverse teacher pipeline. Each of the programs featured here on the slide are served to reduce barriers to entering New Jersey, the New Jersey teaching workforce, beginning with the Fee Holiday, which, as you know, eliminated all certification fees, starting last, last July through next June. Through this initiative, thousands of qualified educators have been welcomed into the talent pool in New Jersey and have begun their teaching journey. The Limited Certificate of Eligibility and Advanced Standing, this pilot has expanded the pathways for qualified educators to enter the profession. This pilot has allowed approved schools to attract qualified educators into their classroom, offering support in key areas needed to ensure success for both the new teacher and the students they serve. Lastly, the research is clear regarding the need to attract diverse learners, or diverse teachers into our classrooms. Diversifying the teacher workforce is considered essential to closing student achievement gaps and moving schools closer to their equity goals. Learning can be accelerated by exposing, exposing students, more students to teachers who look like them. There's a robust body of literature that indicates access to diverse teachers improves not only test scores, but also increases students' chance of high school graduation. There are referrals to gifted and talented programs. It lowers rates of absenteeism, which we discussed and highlighted as a critical lever, and among many other positive outcomes. So together, these initiatives work synergistically to increase the number of qualified educators serving our students and families, which is only driving learning acceleration forward throughout our state.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
No.
Thank you. Our, our final area is in this youth mental health, very, very important. The unprecedented funding from the American Rescue Plan and other federal and state and local resources allowed LEAs across the state to leverage several evidence-based informed strategies to accelerate learning and provide students with the needed supports and services, many of which focused on their mental health and social emotional wellness. Given the disruption and trauma of the pandemic, strengthening relationships amongst teachers, family, and students has been a top priority. Recognizing that relational trust is foundational to learning, NJPSS has offered programs and resources centered around creating time and space for community and relationship building. An emerging body of research emphasizes the critical role that addresses student mental health should play in the design of LEAs' larger learning acceleration plan. The activities, opportunities, and resources provided by the department in this essential area has and will continue to be leveraged in a variety of ways in the service to learning acceleration through the most critical lens of students' mental health and well-being. Collectively, all of the areas that we discussed in NJPSS initiative are, are focused on trying to take a multidisciplinary approach to address the needs created by the historic COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to re, excuse me, maybe you're not the right person, but to reiterate, it'd be nice to hear what the governor's panel came up with for getting more teachers, because I know, I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson, Fatima, Burnham Watkins, and I attended a conference with the NJEA, and there were a lot of questions about that. But the board wasn't included on that panel discussion, so we were unable to answer that.
So next month, we'd like to provide the board with an update.
Next month?
Happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I just want to comment that, again, and thank the department for sharing this information with the public. I think it's hugely, hugely critical for the public to know the steps we're taking to address learning loss, which is a national issue, a national challenge. And certainly, many of us want to try to do whatever we can to accelerate learning so that the, the loss during the pandemic does not prevent students from achieving their full potential when entering the workforce or pursuing a, a, a college education. And so certainly, there's much, I still believe, based on the, the presentations earlier on the data, there's much more that we need to do, but please let us know how the board can assist the department in advancing all these important initiatives that you presented in this presentation, but also how we could help in, in advocating for additional funding or additional support from the general public in terms of what's needed for education, and how this is important for the economic well-being of the state to ensure that our students are progressing in a way that meets our standards in a way that we expect. So a lot of work ahead of us, but I thank you for the presentation, Commissioner.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? Okay. And now we have Ms. Nellie Gush, who's going to give her report to us, and we're so happy that you're here and we get to see you, so please go ahead. Oh, is your, excuse me, is your person here, your advisor?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Gore.
Hi, sorry, Mr. Gore, I didn't see. Nice to have you, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, President Goldenberg, and good morning to all. As we enter December. I'm just going to restart. Thank you, President Goldenberg, and good morning to all. As we enter December, the beautiful fall leaves have long fallen, and winter is in full swing. Despite the colder temperatures, there is the warming feeling of the holidays. We have Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Diwali, and so much more to look forward to this time of year. We can spend time with family, reflect on the year behind us, and look forward to the year ahead. Regardless of what you may celebrate, I wish a very happy, healthy, and joyous holiday season to all. I would like to start today by talking a little about the student.
Hey, Elaine, can you hear?
This is Ron, everything froze. She's, her screen's frozen, but Elaine isn't.
Yep, I'll text Diane and tell her we can't hear.
The video's out, too.
The SEDEXO team also informed us of their plans to extend breakfast sales to 10:00 a.m., which previously closed at 7:40, when classes start. Students were delighted to hear of these plans. Overall, the SEDEXO team was very receptive, and we were thankful for the opportunity to be able to share the student perspective. Additionally, our junior class council hosted a school-wide pickleball tournament on November 17th. The competition consisted of 50 teams with two players each, playing out in a single classic, in a classic, single-elimination style. There were also students and parents present as spectators to support the players. This tournament served as the fundraiser for the junior class council, who were able to raise over $600. In recent years, hosting this event has become a tradition for every junior class council, attributable to the extensive pickleball unit exclusive to 11th-grade physical education curriculum. The Physical Education Department even organizes an in-school pickleball tournament that spans across all 11th-grade physical education classes, setting the tone for the junior class council's rendition of the event. On November 13th, NJASC held its November executive meeting. Here, I had the chance to catch up with my fellow state officers about events happening in their schools. Our vice president, Alina Chen, shared with me some of her recent student council endeavors. At Alina's School, East Brunswick High School, a Thanksgiving chocolate fundraiser was underway in November. Additionally, as a part of their annual holiday spirit activities, the school is organizing a toy drive to provide gifts for students within the district who qualify for free or reduced meals. In addition to this charitable effort, Alina's student council will also host a festive door decorating competition, where students will bring their creativity to their homeroom and administrative doors, turning the hallways into lively displays of holiday spirit, diverse culture, and school pride. Alina also talked with me about her experience attending the Fall 2023 LEAD National Student Leadership Training Conference. She attended this conference as a part of her duties as an ambassador of NATSTUCO, National Student Council, and of the National Honor Society Student Advisory. At the conference, Alina met with 14 of her fellow student ambassadors. The three-day event, hosting over 500 students, was an incredible opportunity that fostered various skills, such as teamwork, communication, and innovation. Importantly, the conference also promoted valuable lessons, such as finding and forging your own path in life and believing in your ability to make significant changes in the world. She also had the opportunity to temporarily manage social media accounts for NATSTUCO at NATSTUCO at National Honor Society while at the convention, where she posted takeovers and videos of the delegates. She will be encapsulating her experience at LEAD Fall 2023 in an article that is to be published under the National Association of Secondary School Principals, NASSP, School of Thought Blog. In recounting her incredible experience, Alina highlighted one specific aspect she wished had been different. She noticed the absence of other New Jersey student leaders, excuse me, and expressed a fervent hope for this to change soon. She shared with me her feelings about the importance of increased participation in these conventions, with an emphasis on the unique opportunities they offer to gain diverse perspectives and experiences from student leaders across the entire nation. Alina's sentiments resonate deeply with me. I find it gratifying that student, New Jersey students like her consistently prioritize helping one another grow and find meaningful ways to connect with each other. This spirit is a testament to the strength of student community and leadership, and I hope students will continue to foster these connections through various initiatives and shared experiences. Finally, as I wrap up my remarks, I wish to acknowledge something that has been weighing heavy on my heart. I debated for quite some time whether I wanted to discuss this matter, but as a young person who has been given such an incredible opportunity here at the State Board of Education meetings, I feel compelled to share my voice, represent my peers, and share the following message. It has been nearly two months since conflict arose in the Middle East. I remember, as our social media feeds became filled with devastating news, every day, my heart ached and continues to ache for those who have suffered and the lives that have been so unfairly lost. In acknowledging this matter, I wish to put forward a very simple message. During such times of world conflict, I feel it is imperative that we remember one thing. Despite our differences, we are all united as a human race, every one of us. We are all united as one human race. The greatest strength humanity has is just that, our humanity, our ability to love and protect one another. I'm sure that many of us are experiencing a collective shock and sadness at this time. I hope to perhaps provide some consolation when I say that I am optimistic. I'm optimistic that humanity has the power to prevail. I'm optimistic that love has the power to prevail over hate, because love is 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 love. Cannot be killed or swept aside. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
We are fortunate enough to get a copy of your remarks prior to the meeting, and I have been reading this over and over and over, and your last two paragraphs just so resonate. One, I found such hope in it's gratifying that New Jersey students consistently prioritize helping one another grow and find meaning, always to connect with one another. That piece alone was great, but you are such a blessing to this board and such a reminder as to why we are here. And for me, the hope that you give, these are very sad times. One, you recognize their sad times, and you were brave, and you made reference to it. I thank you for that. But two, you gave us points. I hope.
The leadership in our student body, still have hope in the future. And I also pray for peace and hope for no more loss of life and look forward to a day where, as you mentioned, the opportunities for humanity to rise above the conflicts. And so I applaud your courage in bringing this topic up. I applaud your contributions to the student community across New Jersey. And as Mary Beth mentioned, you are a two-plus thing to have on this board, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Nellie, once again, you continue to bring to us topics that are timely, topics that require our attention, and you call all of us to action. So I want to thank you for being that spark that we need, and I want to thank you for capturing experiences of other students who could not be here with us. When we think about active volunteerism, there are many layers to that, but you're not only working for your generation, but those who will follow, because people are always looking, and thank you for being a leader.
Thank you.
Kathy.
Dr. Butcher.
Oh, yes, please, Sylvia Farks, go ahead.
So as my colleague said, we do, we get these in advance, and I've made a practice every month to not read them, because I like to hear it firsthand. And I'm going to have to start reading them in advance, because then I find out when you speak, I can't speak after. You bring me to tears so many times and in so many powerful and hopeful ways, and you are so right, love is love is love is love. And when things seem hopeless, we often have to remind each other that hope is a good thing, and you bring hope. Thank you.
I believe Dr. Butcher is next.
Yes. You know, your remarks are very moving, and, you know, I can't echo more of what Arsilio had to say. Yes.
Yes.
You're.
Sorry, your hand is up. Did you?
I, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Your remarks are so moving. I can't echo more, emphasize what Arsilio had to say. I think the unfortunate part is a couple people, because this is a state board of the state, and it kind of falls within a particular group of individuals who watch. I know there's reporters in the room, and I've done this before, and this is one of the times I'd like to do it again. If there are reporters in the room that want to pick up on this, it would be great if they could help share that message to the rest of the state. Thank you. I hope they're in the room, those of you that I think are in the room. You talk to her after.
Anybody else at this time? I can just add, I appreciate everything you do, everything you say. Seeing no other hands at this time. We'll go ahead with the business of the meeting.
Thank you. In case you missed it, on October 2nd, I visited and extended congratulatory remarks at the Morgan Village Middle School in Camden to celebrate the grand opening of their Innovator Academy, which is a part of the Star Academy program. The Star Academy program embodies a commitment to nurturing young minds as it provides previously disengaged students who have fallen behind in their educational journey with a customized learning opportunity and experiences that are crafted to suit their needs. This is a significant milestone in the pursuit of learning acceleration during the critical middle school years for students in Camden City School District. On November 9th, Assistant Commissioner Chris Huber served in my stead on a panel alongside State Board President Kathy Goldenberg and State Board members Dr. Ned Johnson and Fatima Burnham Watkins at the New Jersey Education Association's Convention in Atlantic City. The discussion on current and upcoming educational initiatives and accomplishments was moderated by NJEA Vice President Sean Beatty. Following the panel discussion, NJEA attendees asked the panelists questions from the floor. In November, we also announced the Review/Amend/Spin campaign to assist with expending the Federal American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief, or ARPESR funds. This is the last of the federal relief funds dispersed to assist with COVID-19 recovery. These funds must be obligated by September 30th, 2024. The department has created resources for LEAs and school staff who are involved in the reporting, filing, and spending of ESR funding. In the coming months, as part of our efforts to help LEAs expend all of their ARPESR funding, we will highlight key resources connected to three suggested steps: review, amend, and spend. There are several examples you can find on our website, such as a new webpage, upcoming technical assistance sessions and office hours are also available, and the first is an ongoing ARPESR Roundtable Series on Making the Most of Your ARPESR Dollars: Mental Health Supports. And the first roundtable occurred, actually, last Wednesday. I also want to take the opportunity to congratulate school number five of the Cliffside Park School District in Bergen County for being named a 2024 National Elementary and Secondary Education Act, that's the ESEA, Distinguished School. School number five is being recognized for excellence in serving its multilingual learner population of students. School number five will receive up to $15,000 to support Title I programs and will also be recognized, along with other ESEA distinguished schools from across the nation, at the Hybrid National Association of ESEA State Program Administrators Conference in February 2024. Our social media campaigns for November included STEAM Month, where we promote science, technology, engineering, arts, and math education to encourage curiosity and ingenuity as our educators and students discover the infinite wonders in these subjects. We also honored our veterans, including the announcement of a program supporting our military as they pursue a career in education. In addition, National Scholarship Month and Academic Writing Month were. In addition, National Scholarship Month and Academic Writing Month were highlighted. National Scholarship Month is a time to raise awareness of opportunities for current and future college students looking for additional financial assistance. And Academic Writing Month is an online writing event where participants challenge themselves and encourage others to meet self-determined writing goals during the month. On November 29th, I proudly recognize Department of Education employees for five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, and yes, even 50 years of state service for the years of 2019, 2020, and 2021. While the pandemic delayed their formal recognition, they would not be denied the opportunity to be celebrated in person. This month, the department will highlight Computer Science Education Week, Special Education Day, the International Day of People with Disabilities, among our various holiday celebrations of Hanukkah, Christmas, and Kwanzaa. As we reconvene on January 10th, I also wish everyone a Happy New Year. So as always, I ask you to be sure to like, share, comment, and retweet as we spread awareness of the exceptional work occurring in education across our great state and at the Department of Education, where we continue to dream, achieve, serve, and inspire our followers and society. I wish you all a wonderful holiday season. Thank you, President Goldenberg.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, can I add one more to this expansive list of achievements and, and great things to announce? I just want to, want to mention that the New Jersey Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents just celebrated its first annual and inaugural gala. And they celebrated a year of achievements. They launched this year. And I just wanted to express to them that I, I certainly wish them well and I just want to congratulate them on the achievements for this past year. I was fortunate to be honored at this gala last Friday for my work here on the State Board. But more importantly, it's important to acknowledge that, as we talked about diversity and inclusion, that we do have a diverse leadership in the state and we want to acknowledge the work that they do. And again, congratulate them on their efforts to try to improve public education. So just wanted to add to that.
Thank you. I congratulate them as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, President Goldenberg, item A, I do not have personnel recommendations today, so I will move to item B. Today, I share the finalization of 10 school districts, New Jersey CUSAC evaluations by the Executive County Superintendents. To that end, I recommend three school districts for certification. Dr. Irving, our Assistant Commissioner for the Division of Field Support and Services, and Executive Director Robert Gregory will share the list of school districts for certification by county and respond to your questions.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone.
Yes.
Happy holidays.
It's, you know, great to see members of the board. Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to bring forth the three school districts. You know, to Board Member Barry, and the questions you shared before, I just want to just remind the board, because I know, you know, we come before you so often and we have conversations around student achievement indicators for CUSAC, that CUSAC is a, is a tool in which we utilize as a department to measure, you know, the performance of districts, as Commissioner shared, with AD being the benchmark, you know, of which there are five particular, you know, DPR areas, Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Government, Governance, Operations, and Personnel. With regard to Instruction and Program, there's a total of 16 different categories, what we call indicators, in which districts are reviewed upon every single cycle. And as you all know, we just completed a cycle, you know, we will begin a new cycle as we look forward in the, you know, coming year or so. But, you know, of those 16 indicators in IMP, the first seven are what we call the Student Achievement Indicators, and the eight through six are what we call the Curriculum and Policy Indicators. So as we, you know, speak with you all in reference to the performance of local school districts, we wanted just to give you some even greater context that nine times out of 10, when we're having conversations around Instruction and Program, and particularly, you know, we're talking about normally those first seven indicators around student achievement, student performance, because that is the work, you know, you know, as, as we discuss all the time in this space, is that every district, every community is endeavoring to raise the bar relative to achievement in our respective state and is through the Commissioner's leadership and that of our respective colleagues who work extensively to help support every district. To that end, we have three districts that we are presenting to you all for certification today. In Gloucester County, we have West Stepford Township School District. In Ocean County, we have Tom's River Regional School District. And in Union County, there is the Springfield Public School District. Those are the three districts that we are presenting this morning, this afternoon. Sorry.
Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time?
I, I actually, thank you for explaining that. I, we talk about multiple measures and looking in, so I use CUSAC also as something that, that I'm looking at. And I'd love to get that list of the 16 indicators, just to view that a little more, but, so here's my question. I'm, I'm looking at 10 districts. We have three that are approved, seven not. If I were to look back at the last five years, we were taking the last five years, is what we're looking at indicative? I mean, I, I've been on the board for a while. I really feel like we're seeing Instruction and Programming being an area that's keeping a lot of districts off of achieving, you know, certification. Can we see over the last five years how districts have been doing? Are we on track the same as we've been in the past? Or are, are we definitely significantly having less districts be certified?
So we can get that information for you, but if the data from the assessment presentation is an indicator, we know that post-pandemic, we did see a decline in achievement. So that would transfer to the CUSAC cycle, but we want to ensure that we're providing accurate data and we will prepare that for you.
I, I would like to see that because I want to see how much they are mirroring. I, to me, Instruction and Programming, that's, that is the core of, of, you know, of what we need to be doing well. So I, I would love to see that. I'm pretty sure I remember because it, from years past, that that wasn't necessarily the case. So I'm going to be looking towards the future to see that we're, you know, we're going the other way. We're certainly, I can see people are trying, but do we need to even be putting more time, effort, and innovation into Instruction and Programming? So that will be helpful. So thank you. I look forward to getting that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another question?
Yeah, I have a question about the districts that didn't meet the standard. I didn't, but I didn't know if you were going to speak to those first, or if you want me to ask.
Go for it, please.
Okay. Thank you. And like Mrs. Barry said, it looks like out of the seven who didn't meet, 100% of them didn't meet on Instruction and Programming. Most of them met on the, on the rest of the criteria. So I was just looking at what other items some of the other districts didn't meet on. And I saw there's a full explanation on Roselle. Came up to 63% on Financial Management, and it's got a lot of detail into why that would be. So thank you for that, and I'm sure they're addressing that with the oversight of the state. I was wondering though, Brook Lawn fell short on personnel, but I, I didn't find a description of why. Like, what does that mean? Is it not enough personnel or not good personnel? What do you mean by, what does it mean by personnel?
So the Personnel Indicator is, is really, remember, CUSAC is always to look back the year prior to. And so the Personnel Indicator normally looks at the Human Resources operations, the Personnel operations of how the district functioned for hiring and retaining and, you know, in keeping staff within districts. So it, it can be, without looking at the indicator, you know, specifically, it may be, you know, missing information, it may be information filed incorrectly. Remember, you know, CUSAC is a compliance document. And so the goal is about creating consistency across our districts. And in those cases, normally, you know, those are easily rectifiable because we're able to quantify. We're able to say, hey, you know, let's make sure we put that file in the particular place where it needs to be, or this information wasn't where it needed to be when we reviewed it. And so in those cases, the work that we do in the county office, I think it's really substantial because of, you know, these interim reviews, and in particular, this district's an interim review. And so that means this is an ongoing conversation, you know, that we are having, that we're doing from the county office and from the department, but the district in particularly.
So they get the support and review again on meeting that, that.
We'll be back in six months.
And that's excellent. And I'm guessing that, like, personnel, that means teaching personnel, not overall, it's not administrative or.
It is inclusive of all certified staff in the school district.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. And good on Halliday, 199% in operations. I'm, I'm sure it's a typo, but just wanted to point it out.
Thank you.
And if I may, just as a point of clarification, the way the process currently works is school districts conduct the self-assessment. And then the board, the local Board of Education, reviews what is submitted to the department. And so they, in essence, attest to the findings. So they know before we arrive typically where they are strongest and where they have areas of improvement. And then our process is to go in and look at the data that they've identified and then make our, I'm going to say make our findings, but actually then issue our findings based on the data we reviewed and then have a conversation to ensure that it was an expansive exploration and that we didn't miss any data. And you will find over the course of time, a district may come back and say, oh, we didn't think to include that, which may lead to an additional point or two. And sometimes it does not occur that way. So we're in constant conversation with the LEAs as opposed to us coming in and giving them a number, and they not have an idea of where this number was originated in their work. They help us with the initial inquiry and insight into their work.
And isn't it a compilation of three years of data?
No, actually, we visit every three years, but we typically look at the prior year.
Just the prior year.
Yes. Absolutely.
Any other questions at this time? Hearing and seeing no hands up, may I please have a motion to accept West Stepford Township, Tom's River Regional, and Springfield?
Motion.
Thank you, Sylvia. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mary Beth Barry. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item C for First Discussion, Chapter 22, Student Residency. The Student Residency Rules establish a process for determining which public school a student is eligible to attend free of charge according to New Jersey State Law 18A:38-1. The rules indic, excuse me, the rules include examples of how a district may determine student residency, how the residency rules apply to students with special circumstances, for example, military and homelessness, and the procedures to follow when an enrolled student is deemed ineligible for attendance. As these rules are set to expire in April of 2024, the proposed readoption with amendments is organized for efficiency and alignment with current laws. Mrs. Sechel Onat, Assistant Commissioner for the Division of Finance and Business Services, and Mr. Alan Dupree, Director of the Office of School Finance, are here to present an overview of the rulemaking and respond to your questions. Ms. Onat.
Good afternoon, President Goldenberg, members of the State Board of Education, and Commissioner Ellen McMillan. We're here to present Chapter 22, Readoption with Amendments. Chapter 22, under NJAC 6822, is student residency code is up for readoption in April 6, 2024. Last time it was readopted was April 6, 2017. So we're here to propose some changes.
There we are.
Yes. So the, the purpose of this chapter is to establish rules, establish procedures for districts to determine students' eligibility to attend school in a particular school district free of charge based on domicile, residency, or affidavit student status, which means living with and supported by a person other than the parent or guardian for reasons not related to attending school. And the rules under Chapter 22 detail what a district must include in its policies for determining residency and detail the process for charging tuition for students who are ineligible for free attendance. So the goals of the proposed amendments here are, there are, you know, there are four goals we have in mind. So just the main one, the, one of the ones is to update terminology, titles, and gender language. Second one is to replace and remove outdated references to statute and code. The third one is to increase consistency in districts' residency standards for students. And the last one is to implement newly enacted legislation, PL 2023, Chapter 61. So if you were to summarize these proposed amendments, we can focus on number three and four from the previous slide. As the main purpose, one of the main purposes is to implement the enacted legislation, PL 2023, Chapter 61. This legislation was amended on May 2023. So our rules currently are not in sync with the enacted legislation. So we're making sure that by making these amendments here, that we are in sync with the legis, the amended legislation. So two amendments are proposed to align the rules, as I mentioned, with this legislation chap, under Chapter 20, 61, which eliminated a Board of Education's discretion under most circumstances to enroll non-resident students without charging tuition. So legislation had with and without charging tuition, so they eliminated the without part that we have to also eliminate that from our rules. So the amendments, the, are to amend this Chapter 22, 2.2, to eliminate the allowance for district boards of education to admit non-resident students free of charge. And another section that is related to that, the repeal the rule at, at 3.2H8, which states that a student board of education can admit non-resident students without the payment of tuition. I must make a quick note that with, without the charging tuition, and there are sections under Chapter 22, there are exceptions to the non-resident students that are being, that are eligible not being charged for tuition. There are exceptions, and other sections of Chapter 22 identify what those exceptions are. So the second other main purpose, to ensure consistent application of school districts' residency policies. We're proposing a new rule under 2.1C, 2.1C section to clarify that a Board of Education must apply its residency requirements in a consistent manner for all students, whether the student is enrolled in the district schools, a charter school, a Renaissance School project, or an out-of-district placement. So the new rule will, will read exactly like this. See, "The district board of education shall apply the policies for determining a student's residency consistently for all students regardless of the school of attendance, including charter schools, Renaissance School project, and out-of-school, out-of-district placements." This concludes the presentation. Now we're here to answer your questions. This concludes the presentation. Now we're here to answer your questions.
Thank you. I had the benefit of getting to speak with you during committee. Would any of the board members, are there? I see Fatima's hand up. Fatima, please.
Yeah, I just have a, I just have a question. What is the shift trying to garner against or help to do? My question clear?
Can you repeat that question? She's asking if, what is the shift, if there is one, to help or to preclude? Is that right, Fatima?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
Sure, I think I'm just giving it. So for us, the interpretation of the legislation is not within our purview, but the alignment of the regulations to the statute is what we're focused on. We can look to have our team research that by speaking with the sponsors of the bill possibly, but we don't have that insight.
It just will be helpful to figure out, I'm a student now, coming into a new district. Like what is, what experience is different as a result of the legislation?
So what was highlighted for us this morning is the shift of tuition payment or the shift of tuition being optional with or without, which has changed to with. So that was one of the areas that was highlighted, which we must address in our regulations. So that if a district is going to accept students outside of its area of residency, now tuition must be charged, whereas before it was optional.
That's what I wanted to highlight, that it must be charged now versus before. If we had more discretion.
Yes, but the target group or what precipitated this is what we don't have today to share.
Okay, will we get that, Commissioner?
We can seek it. We can look to have a conversation with the sponsors of the legislation and see what feedback we receive that can be forwarded to you. So we will definitely inquire.
Thank you.
Of course.
And this is First Discussion, so we did have other opportunities to get clarification. How about other questions? Mr. Fornaro, sir?
He's still muted? You're still muted, sir?
You're muted, sir?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, in terms of number of out-of-district students in a particular district that they want to attend, is there a number of students that the district can accept and then reject those others? Or the number is just, you know, ongoing? There's no number of students that can go to that district? Can you answer that question?
This is subject to the board policy based on the available space within the district. So that is not something mandated by statute or regulation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia, please.
So I'm looking, and maybe I'm just not seeing. There are exceptions to the rules for whether or not a district can accept students with non-payment. And I, when I was on my local board, I remember we had, it wasn't a policy, but it was a standard that if a child had gone to school throughout their entire career, say from kindergarten through 12th grade, and then the family moved and that child still wanted to graduate with everybody they knew and continue at school, they, we could, at our discretion, allow them to continue for, you know, the last eight months of their senior year, provided their parent or guardian, provided the transportation from wherever they were moving. Would that still be, would the locals still have the discretion to do that?
We're not proposing to change those exceptions that are already in the rules. We're only focusing on these two sections to make amendments. But those exceptions, one of them like to be a child of a federally, federal parents, correct? And there are a few other ones, but that one, if it's not in the rule already.
To just finish up a school year or those kinds of flexibilities the locals would still have?
Yeah, as long as they comply with the rule, if it's included in the rule. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, I believe, that is it for the presentations. We do have a new business question, I believe?
Yes. Thank you, President Goldberg. Obviously, we've all read, there's new legislation on the Praxis Core and the elimination of New Jersey Basic Skills Test for teachers and the alternate certificate of eligibility. Can we get more information or can we request some kind of presentation for the future? Because it's brand new. If we could get additional information on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for that question, Board Member Barry. We continue to work on the guidance that we will be sharing with the field. And so at the next board meeting, we can look to update the board as well. Of course.
Great. I think we'll appreciate it. I know the field had some questions, so thank you. And any other things to bring up before we ask for a motion to adjourn, please? Jack, you're muted. I see your lips moving, but you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. I had a question that I wanted to ask. Are those funds coming from the state or from the federal government for those students that are out of district? Where's that money coming from?
For the last presentation you're speaking of?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It's, do you want to speak into the microphone? Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're not federal funds. They're part of district budgets and part of state funds.
So a homeowner, a homeowner is going to accept the increase in their property taxes to support this program?
This is not a program. So if there's a non-resident student coming to the school, school have an opportunity to now, are obligated to charge tuition for that. So that actually increases the school's revenue, which means that that will be less burden to the local, on the local levy.
Another question.
Less burden to the residents.
I have another question for you. Have you attempted to contact the federal government for funding for this program?
So just to clarify, Board Member Fornaro, this is about an individual family's decision to seek enrollment in the district, in a district in which they do not reside. So because it is a personal choice that actually is bound by the guidelines established in each of our unique school districts, it does not have a federal component as it relates to funding.
Well, let me just say this. Years ago, the school districts would not accept out-of-district students because of their finances or their budget, not being able to support that. What's changed since that time? Can you tell me, Commissioner?
What is being advanced at First Discussion is their requirement that would bind a school district to always charge tuition when accepting a non-resident student.
I understand that, but you didn't answer my question.
Please, ask it again.
All right. Years ago, not too long ago, the school district would not accept out-of-district students because they had a budget that they needed to comply with. And if it was going out of, outside of their budget, how are they going to accept these additional students without getting some finances from some, from someplace?
Yes, and now the proposed regulations state that the financing must come from the family, the parents, looking to enter or enroll their child into a school district.
So, so you want to be more clarifying about that? I didn't understand that.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes. So I have a child and I live in the neighboring town or the town next to you. And I want my child to attend your school district. So prior to, or currently, your school district can say to me as a parent, we have an opening in the grade that you want to place your child. And because our enrollment is lower than expected, you can enroll your child here and we're not going to charge you tuition. And I would say, oh, that's great. Now, with the proposed regulations, the scenario changes because now your school district will have to say to me, if approved by the board, oh, that's great, we have enrollment space, but you will have to pay the tuition, which is set by the local Board of Education. Okay, so the tuition, right, yes.
That kind of answers my question, but I, I'm not really satisfied with that answer. I'm sorry to tell you.
But we can speak more. You know, I'm going to ask if we can follow up.
One other question. One other question. Has the state legislators made any attempt to address this issue?
Oh, so yes, they are driving this issue because of the signed legislation by the governor that now we have to align our regulations to ensure that we are honoring the statute, hence First Discussion today.
My one other question. If the student that resides in the adjacent town as you described, why wouldn't that student attend that school where they reside?
Myriad factors, from parental choice. They could have heard that there's a specific program. You may offer a world language that my district does not. There could be other issues such as socialization. There are many factors. Moving my child could be closer to my place of employment and require a shorter commute for me to transport my child from my place of business and to spend more time with my child. The reasons are very personal, and I just gave you some examples of what I've heard over the years.
Does that also include busing expenses?
Oh, that's very tailored to each situation, so it goes back to space as well. But typically, busing is within the confines of that school district. So we're not going to send a bus from your town to my town to pick up my child. Transportation is often the responsibility of the parent.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your response.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fornaro. Hearing nothing else at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mary Beth Barry. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Sylvia. Sylvia, I appreciated all those in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Everyone, meeting's over. Have a wonderful holiday season and a healthy and a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you.